Good evening. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This meeting will be your regular session of the Mayor and Council, City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona. It's being held on Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, 7:01 in our council chambers. We'll call it, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Councilmember Joni Giacominio.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sued.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Stephen Pocken, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Matthew Gurney, Public Works Director, Logan Dodd, Operations Manager, Tim Cox, Police Chief, Jim Richardson, Fire Chief, Joe Estes, City Attorney.
Thank you, everybody. For long silence, I'll just ask again if everybody would rise and to themselves how they would like to give some thoughts, and then we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any proclamations tonight or major announcements. Just want to thank everybody for showing up and those that are watching. So with that, move on. First item will be called the public. Mr. James Terry, do you like to come up and address us? Just you have your three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. My name is James Terry. I own a property up at 348 Williams Avenue, up at the top of Star Avenue. I also own a property in Naco on Wilson Road, 1,000 yards beside of the, uh, the port. I originally moved to Bisbee, and I fell in love with Naco because of the golf course. And I liked to play golf. I'm an actor and a gol- and golf is my sort of hobby. Well, when the golf course closed, I didn't know what I was gonna do with myself, so I thought, well, I'm gonna start a theater up in Bisbee. So I managed to get that lot for a good deal. And there was an old house on it, and I got some bad advice from a contractor I was working with, who told me to tear the house down. And, and so I was working with him, and I was listening to him, so I did. I'm not a, I'm not a developer, I'm not a real estate agent, I'm not any of that. I was, I just, this was my first, I lived in a rental apartment my whole life, so I didn't know about dealing with all this. Anyway, when I bought the property, it wasn't even on the lot I bought. And so three quarters of the house was on the city property, including my sewer and everything else. So I talked to Joe Ward, and he said, and I told him, I don't have a lot of money. And he said, well, you have to buy one piece, then buy the other piece. So I did that. Then when I went to buy, I got the first piece. Then when I went to buy the piece that the sewer was in, and it's a wash, you cannot build in there, it's not a building site. I just wanted to improve the wash. I worked with Lynn Kirchner and Dan Oldfield, and we installed a culvert and in the wash area, and then after taking out $10,000 worth of trash off city property that I took out in order to improve the property. And then when it came up, Joe Ward went up and estimated that it was worth over $6,000. He didn't do an actual measurement. I had Glenn Summers go up and do a survey. He proved that the land wasn't over $5,000 at Joe's $2 a square foot. The land then went to an auction, which I then said, you cannot sell a lot that's landlocked. 10 and 11 would be landlocked. I had to buy that side of 9 because it was landlocked. When I bought the property, a woman complained and said, oh, he's landlocking me. So I, in the same situation, so I had to buy 9. So I bought 9. Then I bought this side of 10 and 11. Then I wanted to buy the sewer side of 10 and 11. And it went to an auction. I don't have the money to get involved in an auction. I didn't get invol- I didn't come to Bisbee to fight. I did not come here to fight. I came here to try and do something. And, and that's my time, but that's, and I applied at the Board of Adjustment, and they wouldn't even let me pay my $125 to take a meeting. And I don't think it's fair. I mean, I'm a human.
So I'm gonna ask you, if you would contact our city manager, and I did see an email today, and from you, and there is a new process now for...
I understand that, but why do I have to go through this whole new process when you, you imported everyone else to say, hey?
We're not here to discuss this, they could, they could inform you of that.
Is liberty and justice for all?
Just, if you contact them, they would be able to work with you on your...
No one else wants that property. And I just wanted to approve it. You can't build on it.
Okay, um, as I said, just please contact...
Or bring up in an amendment in this, uh, meeting, please.
Um, moving forward, we'll move on to accounts payable on your general business.
Thank you very much.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $237,680.80.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pay accounts payable. Do we have questions?
I just have one.
Okay.
Uh, just the amount is, uh, is a little big. So I don't know if it's one supplier or several. Uh, page 13, commercialized, $14,310.13. Maricay, Quince Agate, is this one vendor, several vendor?
I'd have to check, but I'm pretty sure it's a single vendor that was up at the, um, the Johnny Mineral Show.
Okay, so would you be able to check that? The amount is huge.
Yeah, I'll, I can pull the invoice for you.
Okay, that's all.
All right.
Yeah, a couple. Um, on page four, at the bottom of the first section, it says corporate payment system for snake shots. Are those human or animal?
It's animal control, Mr. Giacominio. It's what we use to put down skunks, raccoons, for, so we can send them off to USDA.
Oh, okay, okay. Also on page eight, um, the gas bill for the senior center is $1,364. Is that like for three months? Is that one month? Is that six months? $1,364, just on page eight.
We have a propane tank out there, and so that was just the refill.
Oh, I was just curious how long it lasted.
You know, they just had a bill a couple months ago, so I would say it's a couple months.
Okay.
Anyone else? Hey. I did call and find out on one on page five, which was $4,154, but it was charged twice, but that, we're gonna get a credit back. That was a miscalculation, so everybody realizes if they see that for a duplicate charge, it says, that was a duplicate, we get a, we should refund coming on that one. All right, so I have a motion and a second to approve accounts payable in the amount of $237,680.80. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. So move. And move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight, just five items. Uh, we have one minute to approve. We have an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission, one appointment to the Arts Commission, one appointment to the Airport Advisory Committee, and then one special liquor license by Bisbee Pride for an event held on Saturday, May 13th. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss? Seeing none, I'll take a motion for the consent agenda.
I move, I move could we approve the consent agenda items A through E?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items A through E. As Jim decided, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. So move. Moving on to old business, the old business is the update to the five-year agreement with Bisbee vote for the Bisbee 1,000 stair climb. We put this, laid it on the table, um, last meeting. Since then, we've decided that there are some more negotiations and stuff that will occur. So I'm not exactly sure whether it will come back, but we will put it on hold at this time and defer. Um, we need a vote on this, just put it on the floor? Oh, okay, just, just for update. Thank you. Oh, yes.
So that will come back up for discussion?
It depends on how it all works out.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. They may not come back at all.
Okay.
We'll just see what happens.
I thought it was coming up today, but that's fine.
I'm a tough negotiator.
Yeah. Joe, I hope so.
Now, we're gonna, it's just, um, you know, maybe we did get ahead of ourselves a little bit, so we're going back to see what happens. All right. On our new business, this is item four. This is a public hearing on a potential declaration of emergency by the city council in relation to the fiscal year 2022 expenditure limitations. Who wants to handle it on you three?
Go ahead, Joe.
I can go ahead and, and start it off.
Okay.
Because this is a, a technical requirement for something that happened at the end of fiscal year 22, which is the council were called, the council went ahead and issued and procured bonds to pay down the PSPRS debt obligation. So essentially, you were, you were taking this source of bond fund money and swapping it for this obligation. When the auditors came in to do the annual audit, they looked at that and based off of the language in the city's home rule, uh, resolution, they are considering that those bond funds that were paid to PSPRS as an expenditure. And so what they're saying is, is that, that $20 million was an expenditure under your expenditure limitation. You only had an available excess of approximately $6 million. So city, you over expended $14 million above your expenditure limitation for fiscal year 22. Even though it was a long-term debt obligation, they are classifying it in that one fiscal year under the way they do their audit. And normally, what happens is, is there is a, there's a provision in the state constitution that exempts long-term debt obligations from being considered under the expenditure limitation. That's if, but because the city has a home rule resolution, the home rule resolution applies, and the home rule resolution didn't incorporate the long-term debt expenditure limitations from the constitution. So, and I will let council know, I, I reviewed and I looked at two dozen home rule resolutions for other municipalities that have home rules, and they are almost all identical to what Bisbee has. It is a common home rule language. In fact, there was only one home rule city that I was able to find that had language in its home rule that addressed exemptions, and it was a simple one last sentence in the home rule that said, previous exceptions apply. So because of that, we're in a situation where the, the, the city has expended in excess of what its expenditure limitation was set for, for fiscal year 22. That limitation is set by council. Under the home rule, you set that limitation at the, when that, when that fiscal year 22 limitation was set, we weren't anticipating that, but we also weren't anticipating it being classified as an expenditure for one year. We would expect that expenditure to be spread out over the 20 years that the, the bonds are going to be paid for. So there's a process to resolve in excess expenditure. And that process involves, the first step is the council declares an emergency. That there was an emergency that, you know, that we unexpectedly went over our expenditure limitation. And that has to be voted on by council, and it has to have a three-fourth majority vote by council to declare that emergency. Then there's two, two additional steps. So you have one, you gotta declare the emergency, and then you have two different roads you can go down. You can go down road one, where you take that excess from the last fiscal year, and you reduce it from the next fiscal year. So we would take $14 million of excess from fiscal year 22 and reduce it from fiscal year 23. And in most, most circumstances, that would be extremely difficult for a city the size of Bisbee to be able to absorb a $13 million expenditure in a fiscal year without expecting that and planning for it. The second path is, is you could go to the voters, and you could say, we need voter approval for this excess expenditure limitation that we had, essentially ratifying what happened. Two issues there is that we didn't find out about the expenditure limitation until the audit, which was done in January, and in order, and we're already in the next fiscal year, so we're already in fiscal year 23, which would be the year that they would, the voters would have to approve that excess. We're already past the statutory deadline to get anything on the make out. So we couldn't get it in front of the voters either if we wanted to. So we look back, and luckily, because we have a, a very dedicated and smart council,
was wise.
And humble.
And humble.
This fiscal year for '23, there were a number of potential grants that the city was going to procure, try to procure. One of those grants was a $25 million grant that we got notice that the city did not get accepted for. We'll reapply for it next fiscal year, but we didn't get it for this fiscal year. So we do have budget authority this year to reduce this year's fiscal budget by the $14 million in excess from last year. So that simplifies the process. So now the process is, we have to do two public hearings. The council, we would request the council declare an emergency under the, the home rule language. An emergency is not defined, it can be, just like the language of the resolution for the bonds declares an emergency because it's, it's, it's timely, you, you have time issues with financing and interest rates and stuff, so there are different things that are considered emergencies, and this would be one of them. And then, once the council declares that an emergency, then the city would, uh, through its accounting process, would reduce this fiscal year's, uh, budget by that excess of, of $14 million. So the process that we have tonight would be, right now is for this introduction, and then the opening of a public hearing, taking any comments for or against the declaration of emergency, then closing the public hearing, and then if council has questions, we can answer those, try to answer those questions and proceed through the process.
And vote to vote for them?
No, we still have to do another hearing, and then the resolution would be after that hearing, so it would be at the next meeting.
Yeah, it was in the paper also, that's required. All right, with that, um, I'll open the public hearing. I'll ask if there's any discussion by members of the public that are in support of this item. Seeing none, I'll ask if there's any members of the public here that are opposed to this item. Seeing none, is there any written communication that we have received?
No.
No.
With that, I will close the public hearing and ask for discussion from the council members. Any questions on what's going on? To me, it's, it's unbelievable that we trade one debt for another debt, but it's all due in one year. I mean, it just, when we finance a house, we don't consider that a payment in one year, so... But that's just the way this thing works sometimes, I guess. All right, question, do you have one?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just want to clarify something here. Uh, of the three options that were mentioned, we either go for vote, we ratify, or we, as a council, work on this, or the third option, which I, I believe we cannot base on, saying, the assumption that we're gonna get grant. It's not something, you know, when you're making a budget, when you're making an assumption, we don't have control over that. So I, I think that option, it is just kicking the cans down the road. I believe that should be left out, in my opinion. So the two options, uh, go to the voter, and we're already late into this, and that leaves us for the council to look at this and ratify the, what happened. Well, the one thing that we need to clarify to the public, this, this does not change in the financial situation of the, of the city. I mean, you know, it sounds like there's something financial. This is basically, it's something that we have to, to, to fill in and to avoid, um... Yeah, it's, it's, it's just, so we just need to clarify this, and that's why I'm making this statement. It affects, doesn't affect the finances, it does not add, does not subtract. It just, we have to just make sure, because when you do a budget, and because unlike businesses, I understand budget, it's, uh, you say we're gonna, we spend a million dollars, or whatever, the 20 million, and it went for this year rather than spread it over the 20-year period. I wish we were not aware, and I think we missed on this. So I think, uh, that's my belief, the option for council to work on this and come with a ratification would be the best way to go. This is my recommendation.
And so I can clarify, I, I just mentioned the, the grant as the fact that we have excess funds in this fiscal year, excess capacity, that we will not expend.
Yes.
So we have the ability to do the, the...
But we're not getting the grant, we don't have control over getting this.
Right, but we've already received notice we're not getting the grant.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So we know that there's $25 million in the budget that will not be expended.
Expended, yeah.
So we can absorb that $14 million. Normally, when you budget for the, for the fiscal year, you, you keep that budget pretty tight, and you don't have such an excess. For example, last year, you did have excess capacity, which is why you were only over $14 million. You have about $6 million in excess because of the, the way that last year was budgeted. It just wasn't sufficient to cover the total $20 million and the way the auditors are declaring it on the books. And again, as you, as you are, you are correct, this is just a process issue, it has nothing to do with money.
I just want to make sure that's clarified to the public.
And this is only because there are specific state statutes that say, city, you have to operate within the budget you set.
I was just gonna, as I understand it, we have that budget, that amount of money budgeted, that's why we can do this. We don't need the grant, it's just that money was in our budget, you can't spend more than you've budgeted for. And we have that, and so, so we can do that option now without any problem, because it was budgeted for, the money.
I got a question. So the budgeting for that money, that grant, was pretty much a placeholder in case we got it made. So why can't we placehold with what we have now, the, um, that we're gonna put in that place? What we're overriding, or over...
The $14 million, we are...
I mean, so what I'm trying to say, I guess, is why can't we budget that payment? You know, what we're over budgeting for in our next budget?
Because we're already in the next year's budget.
I know, but I mean, this year...
But the way the statute reads is that, that excess has to be reduced from the next fiscal year's budget. So that, the payment, because we made it in May, was at the very end of fiscal year '22. You already passed, and we already have the budget for '23, and it has to come out of '23's budget. We can't bud, we can't put it into the '24 budget.
Right, but, so we would take it out of this placeholder, but, so you can't for the next, because it's gonna be over, that's what we're gonna be voting on, right? Or to the voters, or to the...
No, 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 nothing's going to the voters.
So it would be just one time, that's not like it, okay, that's where I misunderstood you. I thought we were gonna do it with a placeholder, and then it's still had to go.
No, no, it's just a, this is a one-time issue. The process is two public hearings. Two public hearings, the council issues a resolution of emergency, and then the city, through the finance department, puts, puts that $14 million expenditure on the books for this year, and then we're done and we're fine.
So, so what we're doing for the public is that we're just trying to get it in order?
What we're doing is we're taking it from the left pocket and putting it into our right pocket. I hate to say it that way, but...
We just happen to be lucky that we put that in by the...
I was for the big water, all the water lines in all Bisbee, we had a huge, huge... And we didn't get that grant, so it was gonna go begging, but now we get to change it from the left pocket to the right pocket.
And I can tell you that, you know, in discussions with many other municipalities, because a lot of municipalities did what Bisbee did. They, they bond, they, they took out bonds to fund their PSPRS obligations. But they, one, they didn't have, there were larger cities, and they, they had permanent base adjustments, so that it, it didn't have an impact on their fiscal year budget like this has on the city's fiscal year budget. And the other, the smaller municipalities, the, the bond amounts were not as substantial. Bisbee's was a, a substantial for the size of the city, a $20 million bond for that PSPRS obligation, which is, you know, the reason you did that is because it will save what? $11 million?
Over, over 26 years.
Six years? So fiscally, a very responsible thing to do for, for those funds. And I even asked, uh, and had Carrie ask the, the auditors, can you give us examples of where this, you know, may have been an issue or came from other municipalities? You know, they were like, why don't you go talk to the state auditor general? You know? Nobody wanted to answer questions, because this was a, a very unique, one-off type issue that hadn't arisen. We will, now that we know, and when, we, we just had a vote on the, uh, the four-year home rule resolution. When that resolution comes up again, when Steve will still be here, I'll probably be gone, but Steve will be here. We will include in that home rule that all, that all constitutional exclusions...
Remember that, you'll be here.
So had we, had we just had that language that all prior exclusions apply, then we would be fine. It wouldn't be considered an expenditure, but the way the auditors look at it, and you know how people are auditors and bookkeepers and finance, mostly auditors.
Just one more question, and we will not have to go back to this in the future. Once we fix this, we just want to clarify, this is a one-time deal.
This is a one-time...
It's two separate meetings. All right. We good? No more questions? All right, then, we already declared an emergency. So no motion is required. Next, uh, meeting, we should have another public meeting, and then we can do the resolution right after, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on, item number five. This is discussion of possible approval of a notice intent to adopt ordinance O-2304. It's an ordinance of the City of Bisbee, Mayor and Council approving amendments to the City of Bisbee sanitation code for low-income program. Carrie, who else? There's two of them, actually. One for sewer and one for sanitation.
They're almost identical.
So this is, uh, just amending the current ordinance on what we require for customers to qualify for the low-income program. Just kind of clarifying the things that we can ask for and what, what makes a person qualify for the program.
Actually, item five, we should have item six first, because that shows you what the clarification's... This five just refers to the sewer, you know?
And you can look at item five, or item six, for those details. And as Carrie mentioned... And as Carrie mentioned, it was to just clarify so that the city can verify that those individuals that are applying for this low-income program are actually low-income. We've had circumstances where somebody applies and they own multiple properties. Or they have a family trust. Or their property isn't using any water for multiple months, which means they're not living there, they're living somewhere else. So it's just, it's, it's a way for the city to just ensure that, because this is a low-income program that does allow for reduced rates, we wanna make sure to people who are applying for it, absolutely have the, uh, the program available for them. It doesn't change the availability, it doesn't change, you know, what the program is. It just allows the city to, to verify the financial requirements. 'Cause a lot of people, you know, they'll give us one bank record, but they've got two or three bank accounts. Or, you know, well, here's, here's some taxes, but these aren't the filed taxes, these are just the, the passes that I, I prepped or, you know? So it's just a way of, of trying to make sure that there's accountability for the, for these two programs. Like I said, it's, it is similar for both. We, we do it for the sewer rates and we do it for the sanitation rates. And it allows for those individuals who are on fixed incomes, low income, to qualify to have that reduced rate. That really helps them, uh, with their monthly expenses. And this keeps it very, uh, responsible on the city part to be able to make sure that, you know, we're not have, we're, we're trying to keep it to where as, as few people as possible are able to gain the system and, and abuse the program.
All right, questions? Okay, ma'am?
Uh, just, uh, Carrie here, have, have you done the accounting with Mayor Steve? How much will this cost, uh, cost the city, how much will it affect the budgeting? Because, uh, you know, we have a budget, so how much we will collect? So what percentage, what, what's your expectation? How much effect, what, how much money is gonna be less coming into?
Well, we, we already have the program.
Uh-huh.
So if anything, it would probably increase revenue because
Okay.
the, what people qualify or, you know, might shrink.
Okay. Okay, so this is, uh, it's.
Yeah, I mean, we used to have like somewhere near like two hundred people on the program. It gets down to fifty when we started asking for more information.
Okay.
So, and most people, if they qualify, they're more than happy to give us whatever we need. But there are some people that, you know.
So it has no effect bearing actually on, on the budget.
These are the two enterprise funds. It's just a clarification of the requirements to be.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
No change in the level of your income, those are staying the same.
We were increasingly finding out that people were challenging and not wanting to provide certain documents that in many cases, uh, the same people had provided those documents for years. And then all of a sudden, it's a problem now. And, uh, my favorite one was the guy who came in with his tax return. And it was noted immediately that, "Well, you haven't filed the taxes yet." He said, "Well, it didn't say I had to file." It, it was implied and now it's expressed. So, yeah, so basically, this is intended to be revenue neutral. Uh, we, we intend to serve the same folks that we've been serving. Uh, we're just clarifying and, and putting more teeth into what the finance office can ask for.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, questions, any of them? Take a motion?
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance zero dash twenty-three dash zero four, approving the amendments to the city of Bisbee sanitation code, chapter nine, article nine point one, section nine point one point five, subsection nine point one point five, subsection C and three. Second?
I have a motion in the second to approve ordinance O dash twenty-three oh four. Pro call please.
Councilmember Hill? Aye. Councilmember Jacaminah?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suede?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes unanimous. Moving on to number six, this is the same thing, in fact, this is the one that does have the rules, um, actually spelled out. This will be a intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-three oh five. It's ordinance for amending of the city of Bisbee sewer code. I think we discussed the others, any more questions on this one? And I'll take a motion on this one.
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-three dash zero five, approving the amendments to the city of Bisbee sewer code, chapter thirteen, article thirteen point two, section thirteen point two point two, subsection thirteen point two point two A three C.
Second?
I have a motion, second, to approve, to approve notice of intent for ordinance O dash twenty-three oh five. Pro call.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacaminah?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suede?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes unanimous, so move. Moving on to the last item, is item seven, city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, good evening, I do have a few items tonight. Some, uh, that I think is pretty good news. The, uh, Public Works Department has been working on a, a grant to fund replacement for a classification known as the off, off-system bridge. We have, which we have three of in Bisbee. What differentiates off-system bridges from system bridges, nobody knows. But we, we did know that there were three of them, uh, two of them were in Warren, one was in Old Bisbee. Uh, and so we applied for funding to replace all three of those bridges. The bad news is we only got one funded, but, but we did get one funded, so that's the good news too. Um, so the, uh, bridge deck over Moon Canyon, uh, or on Moon Canyon over the Mule Gulch Channel, which is the intersection right next to Fire Station eighty-two, uh, that has been funded in the amount of one point two billion dollars to, uh, remove, re-engineer and replace. So, I'm having a real hard time looking at that thing thinking it's one point two million dollars, but that's what they awarded. Uh, so we will commence with the engineering on that if we are in this opportunity. Also, in the, um, Grant Department, we recently received two hundred and eight thousand dollars in engineering funds from the State Transportation Board, uh, through the Smart Fund Program. The intention here is to, uh, engineer the replacement of Commerce Street, roughly from, uh, the library, uh, behind the library on Commerce Street, all the way to the Bisbee parking lot. As you know, that's, that's a street built over the St. Mule Gulch that we were talking about a moment ago, uh, and is supported primarily by mining timber. So, um, this is a two-step process. There's also a, a grant that Public Works is applying for, for the actual construction of, of the replacement of the street over, over the drainage way. That's probably a next year. We're gonna commence with the engineering as soon as we receive the funds, uh, from the state. And simultaneously, uh, we're going to be working, uh, with one of our grant writers to, uh, apply for. That's, that's a RACE grant, all these acronyms. It's, it's, it's all from the infrastructure bill that we all know and love. So, uh, basically, um, um, if you include the actual grant, the estimated cost of removal and replacement of, of Commerce Street is right now estimated about seven billion dollars. Uh, so assuming we're successful in that, uh, those two projects will add another eight point something million dollars to grant awards that we received in the last twelve months. So, uh, we've been, we've been doing pretty good, so we just keep the ball rolling. So, and then the last line, uh, will be a, a brief update on the, our, two of our favorite bills in the legislature. The, uh, the food tax bill and the rental tax bill. I think you all might be aware that the rental tax bill was vetoed by the governor last week. So, um, Carrie has already added that back into the budget draft. We're still waiting, uh, on some, some action or lack thereof. Uh, the, uh, on the food tax bill, uh, as of Thursday or Wednesday morning, I'm sorry, Tuesday morning. No, today's Tuesday, Monday morning. Pushing the week. The, uh, that bill had passed in the senate, so it's out of the senate. It's in the House right now. According to the league, they're looking at, uh, four, maybe five, uh, uh, holdouts on the Republican side of the aisle. It's not clear what their holdup, their holdout is, uh, because it could be a number of things. They, I mean, they, they could be waiting to make a trade with another legislature on another bill. Uh, or they could truly be against, uh, taking money away that they don't, that's not theirs to begin with. Uh, and it could be a number of things. We don't know yet what the governor's attitude is towards this particular bill. I'm hoping, of course, that it ends up on our desk that, uh, under similar circumstances, that this one is vetoed too. That's half a million dollars, that's, that's real money, uh, in an eight million dollar general fund. So, to the degree that you can be active lobbying, either your legislators or the governor's office or whoever might be helpful, uh, even if you know somebody who's going up to, uh, to lobby, just, you know, we had the, the publisher of the newspaper, I talked to him last Thursday and he was headed up this week to do some lobbying and I says, "Hey, lobby on these bills for us too," which is pretty easy and so he's gonna do it. So, uh, we gotta keep the pressure on as best we can, uh, uh, in order to ensure that that bill fails. Because all the gains we've made in the last couple of years, we can lose if somebody screws the money and takes a life from us. So, uh, I think that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, my discussion with the league on Monday, just to go a little further on, on the food tax would be, there's this feeling out there that, well, the city will just make it up in some other way to tax. However, there's only twenty charter cities, we're one of them. And as a charter city, we cannot raise any taxes without going to the public. So, and that has to be on a general election. So, we'd be totally out of, you know, other people like Sierra Vista, they can raise their sales tax a couple of hundreds of a percentage or whatever and, and make up any loss in food tax with just a vote of the seven people. We can't do that, so it really affects people like us that are charter cities, so. Just, I want, I'm trying to make that clear that they were somehow thinking, "Well, don't worry, you guys can make it up some other way." Well, we can't, just with the, with what we have here, so, um, they made note of that, so. Anyway, all right, thank you, I'll have a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second?
If all is in favor, I'll signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I was nay here and now the ayes have it, we are adjourned.